Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I hope everybody is adjusting to our seasonal time change. I'd like to call this November 9th meeting of the City Council to order. And with that, would you all please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on our nation under God, in the name of all the liberty and justice for all.
And would the clerk please call roll?
McHale.
Here.
Bud Matts.
Present.
O'Brien.
Here.
Beniziano.
Here.
Bassassi.
Here.
Reyes.
Here.
Sanica.
Here.
With seven present and nobody absent, there is a quorum this evening. Therefore, members of the audience are reminded that these proceedings are being recorded for current and future broadcast over the city's cable television channel as well as airing on other media platforms. We have quite a busy agenda, but before we get into the main items, there are four sets of minutes for the first order of business. We need to approve those minutes. The first set is for the October 19th, 2021 Committee of the Whole Meeting. Is there a motion to approve this set of minutes?
So moved.
Thank you, Alderman Sanica. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Alderman O'Brien. Are there any corrections, additions, or deletions to this set of minutes? Okay, seeing none, the question is, shall the minutes be approved? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The ayes have it, and those minutes are approved. This brings us to the October 26th, 2021 City Council meeting. Is there a motion to approve this set of minutes?
So moved.
Thank you, Alderman Sanica.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman McHale, for the second. Are there any corrections, additions, or deletions to this set of minutes? Seeing none, the question is, shall the minutes be approved? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The ayes have it, and those minutes for the October 26th City Council meeting are approved. Third set of minutes is for the October 31st Special City Council meeting. Is there a motion to approve this set of minutes?
So moved.
Thank you, Alderman Sanica. Thank you, Alderman Beniziano, for the second. Are there any corrections, additions, or deletions to this set of minutes? Seeing none, the question is, shall the minutes be approved? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The ayes have it, and those minutes are approved. Finally, the fourth and last set of minutes is for the November 3rd Special City Council meeting. Is there a motion to approve this set of minutes?
So moved.
Thank you, Alderman Sanica. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Alderman McHale, for the second. Are there any corrections, additions, or deletions to this last set of minutes? Seeing none, the question is, shall the minutes be approved? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The ayes have it, and the November 3rd Special City Council meeting minutes are approved. Now, I do understand that the guest here for this evening's proclamation is in attendance, and so with that, instead of waiting for the latter section of tonight's agenda, to recognize Linda Ballantyne and the former Executive Director of the Rolling Meadows Chamber of Commerce in order to speed up her time here and be cognizant of that and honoring her retirement, I'd like to look for a motion to deviate and read this proclamation and present her with it. Thank you, Alderman Bud Matts, for the second. Thank you, Alderman O'Brien, for the second from Alderman O'Brien. Alderman Bud Matts for the first. All those in favor of deviating say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The ayes have it. We will now deviate from the original plan. Whereas Linda Ballantyne has served as Executive Director of the Rolling Meadows Chamber of Commerce since 1984, and whereas Linda Ballantyne's thoughtful and professional leadership served as a catalyst for economic growth within the business community, through her leadership, new businesses were attracted, current businesses grew, and small businesses found resources and services unique to their industry. And whereas Linda ensured that the Rolling Meadows businesses of all scopes and sizes could depend on the Chamber for networking and promotional opportunities, as well as ribbon cuttings, educational programs, human resource support, affinity programs, and sourcing certificates of origin. And whereas Linda Ballantyne's enthusiasm for the Rolling Meadows community, where she both worked and lived, was shown through her community engagement, serving on festivals from Meadows Fest to Silver Fest, Diamond Fest, and the current Community Events Foundation. She also continues to lend her skills as a community advocate on the City of Rolling Meadows Economic Development Committee. An active Rotarian, Linda embodied service above self. Now, therefore, I, Mayor Joe Gallo of the City of Rolling Meadows, do hereby proclaim Wednesday, November 10th, 2021 as Linda Ballantyne Day. In the City of Rolling Meadows, the entire City Council and I, on behalf of the staff, citizens, and business community of Rolling Meadows, thank Linda Ballantyne for her 37 years of service, loyalty, and dedication to our community. She will be greatly missed by all and is wished a great retirement with much health and happiness. Linda, would you like to come up here and receive this proclamation and have your time in the sun with us?
Thank you for all that you've done for the business community. I want to present you with this proclamation, and I hope that tomorrow, November 10th, you enjoy your day.
It's been really a privilege and an honor to not only be with the Rolling Meadows Chamber for 36 years as Executive Director, but also to have been able to partner with the city through the years in the area of economic development especially. I have certainly enjoyed that partnership with the city, having gone through seven mayors and six city managers, and I'm not sure how many police chiefs or fire chiefs that I dealt with, but they were all wonderful in public works to deal with. And so for that, I thank all of you for that longevity that I was able to keep up with the Chamber. I think the hardest part is, I just can't believe it's been 36 years that I've been with one organization this long, and then prior to that, as a volunteer for two years with the Chamber before actually taking a position with them as Executive Director. So it's gone by very fast, and I will say for sure, in 36 years, there is not a day I have ever been bored at the Chamber of Commerce. There is always something that would be going on to keep me and the staff busy. So I will say that part of it. I do kind of miss that challenge, but I am staying busy. I've, you know, on the Rolling Meadows Historical Museum that I volunteered some of my time, I've also been put on the Foundation Board of NWSRA. So I'm actively involved there, and I'm staying actively involved as much as I can with the Economic Development Committee. So again, I thank you for those years that I've been able to serve not only the Chamber, but the partnership with the City of Rolling Meadows as well. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I will look for a motion to close the floor. In return, thank you for the first, Alderman Bud Matts, and Alderman O'Brien for the second. All those in favor of closing the floor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The ayes have it. We will resume. I do not have any reports from the mayor's report this evening. Are there any ward reports? Alderman O'Brien?
Sure, I can provide our monthly update from the Economic Development Committee. This one I'll actually be pretty brief on, was the November 1st meeting. Consensus from the group is that we're still concerned about quorum vacancies because we weren't able to start the meeting initially, what we did, but we weren't able to take any official action for probably about the first 20 minutes of the meeting. We did select Nick Martinelli. He volunteered to be the chairperson, so we did approve that when we had a quorum. We had a good update from Steve with the Chamber Co-op and some upcoming collaboration and networking opportunities they're working on, as well as from Heather with Meet Chicago Northwest and the initial research that's been done in the northwest suburban area for future development of Arlington Park and potential estimated economic impact for the surrounding areas. A gentleman by the name of Edgar and Mario from the Northwest Suburban Hispanic Chamber joined our meeting and discussed future opportunities that the EDC could engage in collaboration with the city and the Chamber. So city staff, primarily Martha, has a takeaway to continue to follow up in any way we can collaborate with the Northwest Suburban Hispanic Chamber. And then we close it out with good discussion on the 2021-2022 goals. We did really a brainstorming session. Having some turnover in the EDC is, we've kind of laid out a new format for meeting agendas that we make sure we hit on key topics. We looked at what the charter was and deliverables to make sure that we're aligned with that. So we make sure we cover the prudent things in our meetings and then possible discussion around having a member of the EDC assigned each of the five topics, so we can knock those out at our meetings. And last but not least, we did confirm 2022 meeting dates will remain the same, the first Monday of the month at 6:00 PM. We did discuss adjusting the meeting time to possibly help with quorum, and everybody that sits on the committee also works full-time or has a small business that they own, but based on competing priorities with other city meetings taking place and other things, it did work out to be the best to keep that Monday at 6:00 PM, because somebody proposed, do we back it up to 6:30, 7 o'clock, change the date to hopefully get more people on the committee present? But after some short discussion on that, we did move forward with keeping it Mondays at 6:00 PM, so we didn't have to cut anything short by somebody coming in after us. And that was it.
Thank you, Alderman O'Brien. Alderman Bassassi, I saw you.
Yes, just one thing real quick. I had one resident reach out to me regarding Julie and there was marking up the parkways and that in the subdivision. I just wanted to let the residents know that that is a contractor with MCI, and there's just to lay some fiber stuff in there, so it should be minimal disruption, and just wanted to make sure everybody knew what those people in their front lawn were doing.
Thank you, Alderman O'Brien. Any other ward reports? Or Alderman Bassassi? I turned, I saw you there. Got to get my name straight tonight. Any other ward reports from any other member of the council? All right, seeing no further ward reports, this would be the time that we would open the floor for 20 minutes to the public. There are two names on the sign-in sheet. They do not wish to speak at this time, but they want us to know as a council that they are here for items pending. Line item B for the Walmart property. And so if there are any questions for discussion on that item, we can make a motion to open the floor, and they'd be happy to address any questions, comments, or concerns that the council has. So moving along from the public comments to those items pending, we have line item A. It's ordinance number 21-60, to approve an ordinance confirming and extending the state of emergency within the City of Rolling Meadows due to the COVID-19 pandemic. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Sanica. Is there a second? Thank you, Alderman Bud Matts. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, the question is, shall the ordinance be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
McHale.
Yes.
Bud Matts.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Beniziano.
Yes.
Bassassi.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
Sanica.
Yes.
McHale.
Yes.
Bud Matts.
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, this ordinance is adopted. This brings us to line item B, ordinance number 21-61, to grant approval of a special use authorizing a major change to the marketplace of Rolling Meadows Plan Development authorized by ordinance 99-17 and other relief necessary to allow for modification of the existing wall signage for Walmart at 1460 Gulf Road. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance? Thank you, Alderman O'Brien.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Beniziano, for the second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the question is, shall the ordinance be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Bud Matts.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Beniziano.
Yes.
Bassassi.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
Sanica.
Yes.
McHale.
Yes.
Bud Matts.
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, this ordinance is adopted. This brings us to line item D, ordinance number 21-63. It's to amend Section 122-606H of the Code of Ordinance of the City of Rolling Meadows, Illinois, to allow electronic message signs for religious institutions in residential zoning districts. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Beniziano. Thank you, Alderman O'Brien, I saw your hand come up for the second. Is there any discussion on this item? Alderman McHale, and then Alderman O'Brien, smack the mic.
Sorry about that. Yeah, I had, I'd been thinking about this one after coming off of a similar incident when I was, when I was, the one that sign was supposed to come up on Quentin Road. My concern comes from if the residents being affected by the possibility of electronic sign at, not the, not the corner church, the one across the street from the residential, if they have been informed that this is a possibility coming, and if we've reached out to them, I think it's like, what, 250 feet? I'm sorry.
Is there a question for Steph?
Yeah, I'm sorry, yes. Excuse me.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I wanted to wait. Yes, they, this applicant went through all the required hearing processes. It was a topic that was discussed for several months and has been in part of the process for several months. So any resident that lives in that area had ample opportunities to come and voice their concerns. As you know, this is a second reading, so it was posted and advertised last meeting. And I would just say, it's a relatively small sign in comparison to what people might think. So I think the Planning and Zoning Commission did an outstanding job vetting this project before they agreed to allow it to move forward.
Okay. Thank you for that. Also, I know that there was, there was a mention in there about the time of day would be regulated for one over the other. Is this going to? I don't know how to put this. Is this going to be, this is obviously not going to be equal for both signs since one is not directly across from the other, from a residential area, correct?
Steph?
I'm sorry, that is a question for you, Rob.
Yeah, yeah, I was trying to read. So in regard to the sign times, I did have a conversation with Alderman O'Brien earlier today, actually yesterday, about the sign time that is permitted to be on. I think Alderman O'Brien was going to make a motion to revise what's currently in the document, so we do want to align this sign with the conditions that exist with the code. I kind of will answer in advance. If the amendment is approved by the council, as I think will be proposed by Alderman O'Brien, because it is a special use, if conditions exist that require additional attention after the fact, we will be able to revisit and add or delete conditions of the special use after the sign is installed. So it does afford us the opportunity, in the event that the hours, say, are too late and residents have a problem with the lighting from the sign, we can bring the special use back and amend it as a result of complaints by residents or whatever the case is. So the fact that it's a special use allows us to revise it once approved.
Thank you very much to answer my question.
Thank you, Alderman McHale. Alderman O'Brien?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. That was, Alderman McHale and I must have had the same thought, is, I wanted to just ask for a modification if we can ensure that that last bullet regarding time sign rather than sunrise to sunset is aligned with the current text amendment for other signage, which I believe is 11:00 PM to 7:00 AM, but that's the modification I would like to request from a consistency perspective.
Okay, so you're making a motion to amend it to be consistent with other language that's pre-existing?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is there a second to Alderman O'Brien's, Alderman Bassassi? Thank you for the second. Is there any discussion on this amendment? Director Horn, I see your hands up if you want to clarify.
Yeah, I'm sorry. If the motion could just be to eliminate the last bullet under H1 of the text amendment, just eliminate it entirely, the length, that way we don't have to rewrite the same language that exists elsewhere in the code, so to just eliminate the bullet.
Okay, so can we just strike this last motion to amend as is, and you can rephrase your motion to amend to strike the last bullet?
Yes, sir.
All right.
I'd like to make a modification to strike the last bullet, H1, within the current draft text amendment.
Thank you. Is there a second? Alderman Bassassi, thank you for the second. Is there any discussion on striking the last bullet to modify the text? Okay, seeing none, we'll have the clerk call the roll on the motion to amend.
Beniziano.
Yes.
Bassassi.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
Sanica.
Yes.
McHale.
Yes.
Bud Matts.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, that amendment is adopted. Now, we're bringing this back as amended, and is there discussion on this ordinance as amended? Alderman Beniziano?
Thank you. So I have not heard from any residents on this matter with the sign going into my ward. Also, I did have a discussion with MI Homes, probably last year sometime, about their information that they were giving those residents that live right along Meadow, that they were upfront with those residents as to the anticipation of the cities moving forward with, as far as the firehouse and potential commercial properties across the street, and they informed me that they were very upfront with the new buyers along Meadow. So I'm hoping that they followed through and were very upfront with those, with those new homeowners, that, you know, changes were happening along Meadow. So if the residents didn't get the letters that maybe Planning and Zoning came out, that they were, they were informed when they bought their homes. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Beniziano. Any further discussion on this ordinance as amended? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Bassassi.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
Sanica.
Yes.
McHale.
Yes.
Bud Matts.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Beniziano.
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, this ordinance is adopted.
This brings us to the next item on the agenda, which are the consent ordinances in for first reading. This consists of three items, and those items are E through G. Does any Alderman wish to remove an item from the consent agenda for ordinances? Okay, seeing none. The Chair declares it in order for one motion to consider the ordinances in a single motion without debate. Is there such a motion?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Sanica. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Beniziano. This brings us to the first line item, E, ordinance number 21-00, to approve an ordinance confirming and extending the state of emergency within the City of Rolling Meadows due to the COVID-19 pandemic. Line item F, ordinance number 21-00, at this time, to amend the alcohol liquor code to increase the number of licenses permitted under the Class B1 liquor license for Good News Gas and Food, Inc., located at 2059 Hicks Road. And last line item G, ordinance number 21-00, to authorize the disposal of surplus city property and equipment. The question is, shall the ordinances be moved forward for second reading? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Reyes.
Yes.
Sanica.
Yes.
McHale.
Yes.
Bud Matts.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Beniziano.
Yes.
Bassassi.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
Sanica.
Yes.
McHale.
Yes.
Bud Matts.
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, this ordinance is adopted. This brings us to line item D, ordinance number 21-63. It's to amend Section 122-606H of the Code of Ordinance of the City of Rolling Meadows, Illinois, to allow electronic message signs for religious institutions in residential zoning districts. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Beniziano. Thank you, Alderman O'Brien, I saw your hand come up for the second. Is there any discussion on this item? Alderman McHale, and then Alderman O'Brien, smack the mic.
Sorry about that. Yeah, I had, I'd been thinking about this one after coming off of a similar incident when I was, when I was, the one that sign was supposed to come up on Quentin Road. My concern comes from if the residents being affected by the possibility of electronic sign at, not the, not the corner church, the one across the street from the residential, if they have been informed that this is a possibility coming, and if we've reached out to them, I think it's like, what, 250 feet? I'm sorry.
Is there a question for Steph?
Yeah, I'm sorry, yes. Excuse me.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I wanted to wait. Yes, they, this applicant went through all the required hearing processes. It was a topic that was discussed for several months and has been in part of the process for several months. So any resident that lives in that area had ample opportunities to come and voice their concerns. As you know, this is a second reading, so it was posted and advertised last meeting. And I would just say, it's a relatively small sign in comparison to what people might think. So I think the Planning and Zoning Commission did an outstanding job vetting this project before they agreed to allow it to move forward.
Okay. Thank you for that. Also, I know that there was, there was a mention in there about the time of day would be regulated for one over the other. Is this going to?
Line item M, resolution number 21-R-112, to award a contract for professional engineering design services for proposed Park Street storm sewer improvement area. Line item N, resolution number 21-R-113, to award a contract for road salt alternative deicing materials for the 2021-2022 snow and ice control season. And line item O, resolution number 21-R-114, to authorize the purchase of snow ice control road salt for winter 2021-2022 season. The question is, shall the six resolutions be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
McHale?
Yes.
Budmats?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Beniziano?
Yes.
Bessisi?
Yes.
Reyes?
Yes.
Suneika?
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, the resolutions are adopted. This brings us back to line item J, resolution number 21-R-109, to adopt the fiscal year 2022 City of Rolling Meadows budget. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution? Thank you, Alderman O'Brien for the first, Alderman McHale for the second. Alderman O'Brien, you had pulled this, so the floor is yours.
Great, thanks, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate it. I certainly don't want to be a broken record. While I am in support of the approved prop, or the budget going forward for 2022, I do just want to remind and ask my peers as we start looking into 2023 during 2022, is that this year we're operating, or in 2022, we're estimated to operate at a $3.9 million deficit. So we've got almost $4 million and if we do round up, it's a $4 million deficit spending where that's just a, a major concern of mine, that 10 of our 15 fund balances are operating in the negative this year by an average of $500,000 per fund balance. Thanks to the great work of the staff and cutting corners anyplace that we can and the fiscal responsibility during COVID, uh, that's why I'm comfortable moving forward. So I'm looking forward to 2023, just that we can try and start to brainstorm ideas 'cause 3.9 million in deficit, we can't make up in a year. And I'm one that's more opposed, or in favor of small incremental property taxes versus us having to say, hey, this year we need 6% because we haven't done anything over the last two years, three years in terms of an increase. So it's just my concern that I mentioned before, I will be voting in favor of it tonight, but it's just, when I did a final review of it and it really stuck out that 10 of our 15 fund balances will be operating in the negative and we're spending roughly 3.9 million more, which will decrease some of our fund balances even within the parameters by another 5% within a single year will be decreased. That's all.
Thank you, Alderman O'Brien. Alderman Bessisi?
Yeah, I'd like to reiterate what Alderman O'Brien mentioned. In addition, we do have one fund balance that potentially will be below its fund balance unless the council takes action somehow throughout this year, and that would be the refuse fund. But I am in favor of voting, of voting for this. I just wanted to say that for the record one last time. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Bessisi. Any further? Alderman Suneika?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would just request some clarification from Alderman O'Brien on which of the funds are operating at a, a negative fund balance.
Sure. I'm actually, I'm glad that you asked it 'cause I confirmed with temporary Director of Finance, Tom, this morning. Is based on page 130 in the materials, the general fund is estimated to operate at a $1.5 million deficit, the 911 fund at a negative $20,000, debt service fund at 500, Tiff Road, or Tiff 4 on Gulf Road at $31,000 deficit, the fire station fund at 8,100, utilities at 1.7 million, refuse, as Alderman Bessisi just commented on, 86,000, the garage fund, 144,000, vehicle equipment, 1.2 million, building and land, 230,000, and that's the last one. Liability insurance and health insurance are operating in the, the black. And that's just based off of what the forecasts are, and that's why I did double check with Tom this morning to make sure I was understanding correctly for, after the individual budget meeting.
So then, thank you for clarifying those numbers. For what we have though, as far as, as making sure that all of the bills are paid and making sure that we are making decisions going forward, there's nothing that's going to be out of the reserve requirements. All of our requirement, our, all of our requirements are met for the fiscal year 2022 budget, and so to say that we're operating negatively is, is I think kind of a, misconstrues the, the reality of the budget for 2022. We also have other items, for example, that are going to be rolling off in the future where we would be able to allocate those funds. For example, we have a bond that is changing as well for, from that 700,000 bond, which will be expiring in 2023. That alone, and we've talked to Director Horn on this item as well, when we were talking about the refuse fund specifically that I know Alderman Bessisi has also brought up. If we were to allocate those funds, which would not in, include an increase in property taxes in one year, that would pay for the refuse fund for the next seven years as it stands, without any increases to rates and any increases to property taxes. So for anyone that's listening at home, I think that, that description paints this as a dire, as dire financial straits, and that's not the case at all. It's a very strong budget and it takes into consideration the realities that many residents are experiencing post-COVID and really through COVID. We have not yet voted to cease our state of emergency for the city of Rolling Meadows nor for the state of Illinois. So as is, I, I absolutely support this budget and I think that this council will be able to make good decisions going forward as well to ensure that all of our resources are being allocated appropriately. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Suneika. Any further discussion on this? Alderman O'Brien and Budmats?
Great, no, I, I appreciate you kind of, I, I agree it's a solid budget. My concern is iterated at the past meetings, it's just an awareness perspective that from a concerned perspective is I think that it's something that we have to start looking at is because, I mean, right here in front of us, it's a $4 million. What our estimated beginning balance is in 2022 is 29 million, close of 2022 is estimated to be at 25. So that's all I was bringing up is that as we start looking forward, that we have this in mind, but I'm with you. Thanks to the great work of everybody, we are in a very solid place coming out of the pandemic. It's just a little bit of a concern that I've got from the forecasting model.
Thank you, Alderman O'Brien. Alderman Budmats?
So then just one other question. How many fund balances will be out of their range, their required range at the end of this year?
My understanding is potentially one will go from 32% to 27% based on my conversation with Tom this morning. That would be the general fund, I believe is what Tom reflected on.
But, but what's the, what is, what is the recommended range for that fund?
So now is not the time for debating the subject, I understand?
No, I'm just, I'm making sure that there's, that there's no misunderstanding that we're not falling be, below recommended fund balances.
My understanding is for that fund, the general, it would be 30% and we are predicted to go to potentially 27 this year. There could be a 5% decrease from the current 32 to 5%, 5% down to 27. That's an estimate based on what Tom and I talked about this morning.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Thank you, Alderman O'Brien. Any further discussion on this item? Alderman Suneika, second bite.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify and answer Alderman Budmats' question. That is within the budget parameters of at least 25%, which is what we would be covering. So we are still in budget parameters at the end of the, of the fiscal 2022 year.
Thank you, Alderman Suneika. Alderman Bessisi?
Yes, um, earlier I mentioned that one fund possibly could wind up below its fund balance, which is 30%, which is the refuse fund. Should we take, unless we take action somewhere, taking money from one fund and putting it into that fund at some point during this year? And that's straight from our discussion before.
Thank you, Alderman Bessisi. Alderman Beniziano?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I really challenge my fellow council members that we've had several Cal meetings and several other meetings prior to the consent resolutions of this budget's coming before us to pass. And without our finance director or temporary finance director even present, that we're having these discussions without solid information, without him present, that these, the numbers have not changed in the past two months that we've seen this budget, that some of these things should have been addressed prior to that if these were concerns. And to be speaking in the hearsay is, is really kinda inappropriate, I feel, without the correct person in charge of it to be able to answer these questions. And so I appreciate, you know, my fellow council members' concerns, but it's time to pass the budget. We've been sitting on this budget now for two months. Thank you.
Alderman Bessisi, second and final bite at this topic.
You got it. All of the concerns that I have brought up, and I believe Alderman O'Brien have brought up, have been brought up numerous times. If you weren't listening, fine. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. From anyone who hasn't spoken, is there any further discussion on this item? Seeing none, the question is, shall the resolution be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Budmats?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Beniziano?
Yes.
Bessisi?
Yes.
Reyes?
Yes.
Suneika?
Yes.
McHale?
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, the resolution is adopted. This will bring the council to other business and reports. I do not have any appointments this evening. I conducted the proclamation earlier. The city clerk, I understand, has some report to provide this evening?
Just a small one.
All right.
Um, I just wanted to present, it's in the packet, they're in the packet, the 2022 city council meeting dates. And that's it.
Thank you. Very concise.
Looking forward to 2022.
I believe we all are to some degree, to some degree. Well, that brings us then on further to the city staff reports. Just a reminder, there are no discussions during the staff reports. The first item is the community items of interest, and for this I will defer to Ms. Lori Cezak. Lori, floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor. The November newsletter can be found on the city website. Please visit citirm.org and click on the News and Views tab. Thank you to the mayor, city council, volunteers, community partners, city staff, and committee members that participated in the new Rolling Meadows Halloween Fest that took place on Saturday, October 30th. More than 800 people showed up to display their costumes, trick or treat, and enjoy the many festive features that day. In advance of Veterans Day this Thursday, November 11th, Rolling Meadows veterans were honored early this year at a formal dinner held last Friday, November 5th, at Meridian Banquets. Over 60 veterans and their guests were treated to a full course dinner, music, gifts, and a special presentation from a former sentinel from the Tomb of the Unknown Soldier. Thank you to the Rolling Meadows Veterans Committee for their dedication and effort to make this a wonderful event for all of those who sacrificed so much. To honor all veterans this Thursday, the city's Veterans Memorial Bell Tower on Kirchhoff will play taps at 11:00 AM, followed by other patriotic songs. Consider a donation to Toys for Tots program this year, organized by the U.S. Marine Corps Reserve, with collections starting at City Hall and the library from November 8th through December 3rd. The city's annual holiday tree lighting celebration will be held on Thursday, December 2nd at 6:00 PM. The event will be held on the property of the city's historical museum at 3100 Central Road and will offer festive new surprises to ring in the holiday season this year. Please note that there will not be a spaghetti dinner this year due to ongoing concerns related to COVID-19. The Rolling Meadows Police Department will be holding their annual holiday food drive on Saturday, December 4th, from 10:00 to 2:00 at the Rolling Meadows Jewel Osco parking lot on Kirchhoff Road. Help them fill the Hummer to Holloway Hunger to benefit area food pantries. For a list of requested donations or for more information, visit citirm or the police department and city Facebook pages. The Rolling Meadows Police Department continues to accept donations for the new Hope Fund that will assist victims of disasters, domestic violence, child abuse, and other hardships that necessitate the need for financial assistance. Donation to the Hope Fund can be made by visiting the GoFundMe page at, located at Thank you.
Thank you, Lori. The next item on the set of reports are the third quarter financials, and I want you to know that the financials are in the packet. And if the city council or members of the city council have any questions regarding the third quarter financials, please reach out to interim finance director, Tom Glazer. He's unable to make this evening's meeting, but he's happy to facilitate answering any questions or comments that the council has specifically related to the third quarter financials. This moves us along to the third item, which is the November 16th, 2021 Committee of the Whole Draft Agenda, and for this I will defer to you, Chief Nowacki, when you're ready.
Thank you, Mayor, city council. The November 16th Committee of the Whole Draft Agenda is as follows. The first item's gonna be a presentation, a presentation of the ComEd Annual Report. Second item on the agenda will be a GIS informational presentation. The third item will be a discussion regarding landscape service proposals versus bids. And the last item on the agenda will be a Fire Department ISO Public Protection Classification Presentation and Announcement by the Fire Chief.
Wonderful, thank you. Why don't we keep this, uh, this ball rolling with the next item, which is the November 23rd City Council Draft Agenda?
Thank you, Mayor, city council. There will be a motion to approve the city council minutes on November 16th, the Committee of the Whole Meeting, and the November 9th City Council Meeting. There'll be pending items, which will be a second reading of an ordinance to extend the state of emergency within the city of Rolling Meadows due to the COVID-19 pandemic. There will also be a second reading of an ordinance to amend the alcohol liquor code to increase the number of licenses permitted under the Class B1 liquor license. There'll also be a second reading for an ordinance to authorize the disposal of surplus city property. And then under consent ordinances, there will be an ordinance, first reading, to extend the state of emergency within the city of Rolling Meadows due to the COVID-19 pandemic. There'll also be a first reading for an ordinance to amend Section 2-39 under the Special Meetings the Code of Ordnances. There'll be new business to approve the bills on warrants for 11/23 of this year. And then under consent resolutions, there will be a, a resolution to authorize a secondary source for purchase of snow ice control road salt for the winter of 2021 and 2022 season. There'll be a resolution to approve a contract for the purchase and installation of access control and video surveillance equipment and software. There'll be a resolution to approve a local public agency agreement for federal participation with Illinois Department of Transportation for a proposed Hicks Road bike path. That's Phase 2 engineering. There'll also be a resolution to award a contract for Phase 2 engineering services for Hicks Road bike path. There'll be community items of interest and a fiscal year 2021 October financials. And there will also be a closed session regarding personnel under 5 ILCS 120-2C1 of the Illinois Open Meetings Act. Thank you.
Thanks, Chief. Appreciate both of those draft agenda updates. This will bring us now to matters not on the agenda, and so I'll ask the council if there are any matters not on this evening's agenda that they wish to address or discuss. Seeing none, then we'll move along, and we'll note that there is a request to go into closed session tonight to discuss personnel under 5 ILCS 120/2C1 of the Illinois Open Meeting Act to consider the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of a specific employee of the public body or legal counsel for the public body, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee of the public body or against the counsel for the public body to determine its validity. It does require a motion and a roll call vote. With that, do I have a motion? Thank you, Alderman Budmats and Alderman McHale for the second. Is there any discussion about entering into closed session? Seeing none, the question is, will we enter into closed session or not? Will the clerk please call the roll?
O'Brien?
Yes.
Beniziano?
Yes.
Bessisi?
Yes.
Reyes?
Yes.
Suneika?
Yes.